Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Shipren and I'm calling the meeting to order of the Planning Board of October 21st, 2024 at 6:33 PM. Um, we have no one online. I would like to do that. Um, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. No, I have to go. Sorry, everybody. I don't have to be perfect all the time. It's too much pressure for me now. Um, okay, uh, roll call, please. Carol Hoss is present.
Arbitrator in present.
And Laura Shipren present. We'll tell you that Lance McNally, Patrick and Andrew have been excused. Um, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I want to thank all of our veterans as well as our military and first responders that are serving us today. And we know that many of them have been busy today alone. Um, the meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Town of Townsend's YouTube channel. Under 1.4 Chairman's additions or deletions, I am asking to add 3.3 for a volunteer response form that we have received and 3.4, uh, work order from Graves. And I'll explain that then. Any objections? Okay, thank you. Um, next, 1.5 approval discussion of the draft of October 7th, 2024 minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the, um, October 7th, 2024 meeting minutes.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Were there any changes? deletions? No? Uh, well, can you have a vote? Carol Hoss is, yes?
Arbitrator, yes.
Laura Shipren, yes. Thank you very much. 1.6. Um, yeah, and then service report?
For applications and anticipated applications, um, One Depot Street Extension, uh, the hearing is tonight, 18 Main Street, uh, application for site plan review special permit and stormwater management permit. The hearing is November 4th. Um, uh, before I have gone and, uh, got my cost estimate for the peer review of the stormwater management application and reach for wishes, I can begin setting up the 53G account this week. Is that good?
Please.
249 Main Street, application for site plan review special permit. The hearing is scheduled for November 4th. Um, the West Meadow Road Stormwater Management Certificate of Completion filing, uh, has, uh, the staff, we're still scheduling staff inspections. The ASBIL and monthly inspection reports have been received. Votes from the field are in the folder. Um, I prefer that we get a one inch rate event to evaluate the system in a storm for the regs, but we haven't had one, so this will be also up for your consideration on November 4th.
Okay.
Uh, approval of that. 27 Scales Lane, the certificate of completion is complete.
Yay!
Completion complete. Uh, 22 Main Street, Planning Board application for modification of the special permit has been received and the hearing is scheduled for November 4th. 208 Pittsburgh Road, still waiting for the permit holder to record the operation and maintenance plan um, for my way. So for site visits and compliance, Campbell Farm is still, um, under, uh, construction, so those who can figure out compliance is ongoing. All permits are in compliance with the SMA, construction phase inspection reports except for 66 Faberito and 5 Crown Bike. Um, uh, unfortunate news, Jessica, Jessica Consalvo, our Land Use Coordinator, will be stepping down from her position next week. Her presence has been a delight and she has offered invaluable guidance to both the town and our land use staff. Throughout her tenure, Jessica has achieved numerous significant accomplishments and she will be greatly missed. Um, the new floodplain maps in the natural watershed is ongoing. We are working on the Waterplane District Bylaw and the master plan implementation is ongoing. Uh, the HMP MBD implementation is ongoing. Accessory Department Bylaw and state law compliance is also ongoing. We're waiting for the grant, the planning grant, um, as well as the draft non-constructionary site plan review bylaw. Again, that's the planning assistance grant at the flow, uh, MBTA, um, the MFOD, the Multitude Area Overlay District Bylaw and supporting documentation was received for pre-adoption, pre-adoption review by the Executive Office of, um, Moveable Communities. Uh, so that's been received and acknowledged as complete. Uh, well, I think the turnaround for that would be hopefully like within a month or two, you know, so that would be well before town meeting. Um, Planning Board Chair Point Resource Holder, uh, is our resource library, including information for new members, updating information for, uh, numbers. And the Townsend and Pittsburgh commuter show is still running on demand, service only.
Okay. Now the works call ahead. Yes, then book it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ash. Um, let's see, we have a couple of teams, so at the rate we put the 6:45, we have to call them. Um, work session 3.1. I go to the two additions first. I think we can probably do those. So 3.3 is, um, to head it out, 4.7, yeah. So currently, um, will you see 4.7? Looks like this. Did it ever get that one?
Yeah, she forgot one about me.
And it has a 3.3 on the top right. Oh.
Let me see.
Hey. Are we in trouble?
Oh, that's good.
Tell me.
Yeah. Do you see anything that says 3.3? I don't see anything. But that's okay, go ahead.
Okay.
You can just read the.
So we have a, uh, volunteer response form from Robert and I'm going to spell his lesson. Juice, unless I say Juiceola?
Juiceola.
Okay. Lives on 19th South Row Road in Townsend. And his occupation is architect, um, public construction manager, retired. He has available 20 hours a week or 80 hours a month. Background experience is registered architect, public construction, 40 years' experience. And he has applied, we currently do not have an opening, but he has applied to planning and zoning. Zoning has an opening, has a couple of openings, I think.
One member, one full member, I think, so it's open, so that will be three weeks.
Right, right. So they really do need him, you know, at this point, but, but that's wonderful that that has come in. And, uh, it came in on the 10th.
He's also in for both boards.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
But, you know.
And then. Okay, so then 3.4 is on Graves Engineering, dated October 18th to Town of Townsend. Um, the subject is, oh, Harbor Village Mall Starbucks Age Restrictive Stormwater Permit Review. Okay, so.
So the main thing that I just to share with the board that I got the cost of the work order and to get authorization to go ahead and get contracted and, you know.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Okay, and the total suggested initial budget for the work to be done is $1,800. Okay. So this is for our information on the, did you guys have this one?
Yeah, I think, well, maybe.
Okay.
Anyways, so that's fine.
And so then that's.
That's just for this farm water. More than by getting other reviews, I don't know.
Okay, okay, that's on Starbucks, uh, did it say where?
Where? Isn't it going into the?
Oh, the bank. Right, we knew that. We knew that last meeting. Okay.
And that here is on November 4th, so coming up.
Okay. We are, uh, down, and so I'm gonna get this. Yeah, open the public hearing. It's 6:45 PM for One Depot Street Extension. Um, applications, one, age restricted development, two, site plan review special permit, three, minor stormwater management permit. Opening the hearing, so the board, please introduce yourselves. Carol Hoss is present.
Arbitrator in present.
And Laura Shipren present. Having said that, we have three of five members here. So the future of this and the other meetings, we need to make sure that, one, the other members of the board review the video and state that they have reviewed it in order to participate in the vote, and we need a vote of all for the special permits, right? Or majority of, or all?
You need four primitive votes.
Okay. But they have to have had reviewed all of the public hearings.
Yeah.
Okay. So, in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 49, 11, and Code of Town of Townsend, zoning bylaws 145-42, site plan review special permit, 145-65 special permits, and 145-54, 1A restricted development, Townsend General Bylaw Chapter 85 NPDES Phase 2 Stormwater Management, and Chapter 175 Article 5 Stormwater Regulations, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 21st, 2024 at 6:45 PM in the Sluggman's Chambers at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street, and via Zoom online. To review an application received from Kevin Smith and Ken Tully requesting a site plan review, age restricted development special permit, and a stormwater management permit. The applicant is proposing the construction of three residential duplex buildings consisting of six age-restricted residential units. The proposed scope of work will include a pre-access driveway, drainage systems, utility machines, and near upper. Why can't you say that? Thank you. He did that very well, too. The property is located at One Depot Road Extension identified on assessor's map, 51 Lot 56 Lot 0, and is in the RA zoning district. Interested parties can express their support or opposition during the hearing or submit written comments beforehand. Copies of the application are available for review at Town Hall during regular business hours or by requesting digital copy of the application via email. Townsend Planning Board, Laura E. Shipren Chair, published in the Sentinel Enterprise October 1st and October 8th. Letters have been letters, applicants, and all the town departments were notified. So. Beth, you have the sign-in sheet. Those that are here, if you're notified. Okay, um, Kevin, this is where I'm gonna give you an opportunity to present.
Um. Well, I can present a letter this evening.
Okay.
Um, requesting, asking for a continuance of this hearing based on your planning board members, reasons for this letter to ask would continue our hearing for proposed project until we have the zoning board should be within the next few weeks.
Okay. So duly noted? And looking, I did look at the calendar and we meet on the 4th, but zoning meets on the 6th. So, um, if we get further on towards the end, I think we can first recommend November 18th as our next meeting. After the zoning. Okay. Um, so I think I will. Well, the board, you can review the plans that we have received and if you have any questions of the applicant, you can bring that up now. We can do that for about two minutes and then I will go into the mandatory referrals. Was there a point in time that you wanted to save?
I'm really only here to hear if the board has questions on the application. I know that there were some questions asked in the, when the application was received, which is relevant to whether it qualified under the bylaw to seek the special permit that's being sought.
Okay.
I've provided some advice, I think, as a consequence of that advice. That's what prompted the applicant to application, the zoning board appeals for the variance. Um, I'm happy to provide more information in that regard or not, depending upon how much you want tonight. Um, I do have another commitment that is tentative on the 18th, so I'm not certain that I can be at your next full meeting on the 18th. I'll add it to my calendar and if my tentative commitment drops off, I'll, I'll attend again. Uh, but if you do have questions tonight concerning the application, um, I'm here and happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. You can start.
Okay, um, just on the, this is the stormwater management, um, application. Anyways, down in, it says the project proposes one 16-foot access driveway at Elm Street, but I don't see Elm Street on your maps here. It shows the driveway on the Depot Road extension.
Right, right. I don't have any information receiving. I have gotten nothing because I simply came with a letter.
Okay.
I asked for a continuance, so I, I wasn't sure that any discussion would take place, so I have no.
So anything that we're discussing tonight is gonna be given to you. So in other words, their questions will be given to you, just like the, um, which is why I wanna read the, um, mandatory referrals into the record so that you can then get a copy of them.
Okay.
Any issues that are being brought up, you may want to address the next time you see us, okay? Um, which will be after zoning. You don't have to write them down.
I have a question, I have a good question, okay.
You have a question?
Well, no, that was the one, the question was obviously addressed, I was gonna write that down to make sure.
Oh, okay, okay. It says Elm Street. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's not a big deal, but, but it says Elm Street and your map shows.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I guess maybe for the attorney, because you said, I know you've mentioned the, uh, the flood maps of 2010.
Yeah.
But if the flood, but if the flood maps become, and this is more for the attorney, if the flood maps become available like December, January, and he hasn't started construction, does he have to go by the new flood plan, um, maps? If, if, if they affected property, it may not even affect our property.
For purposes of the stormwater bylaw?
Yeah.
Um, I, I have to look, but I think your stormwater bylaw references the current, the FEMA maps that are currently in effect. So even once the new maps are adopted at the federal level, you need to amend your bylaw if you expect out the next two upgrade pursuit of the new map. Um, even if your bylaw said as amended from time to time and you could read that as incorporating future maps, if the applicant has received a permit and has that permit in hand, then they play by the rules that existed at the time of the permit issue.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sure your engineer is gonna know that because right now he can only list what is legally in effect. So that's why this.
Yeah, in that sense.
So this is brought up.
Okay. And I think that's all I have.
I have.
Uh, the applicant is requesting three different waivers here. One from the minimum land area requirement. Two, a waiver being requested to allow the proposed maximum density to be 4.5 acres per unit. And the third waiver is um, requested for a 30-foot property line offset to the buildings. So these are um, what waivers would be required here to be provided for this project. Um, so looking at the site plan, um, I see that the duplex unit 5 and 6 um, really encompasses quite a bit half the distance of the setback requirement. Uh, so that would have to be a relief. Um, and then I don't understand how they arrived with 23 spaces for parking.
Do you mind if I step up to the table real quick? I didn't bring any coffee with me.
That's okay.
Right, I understand. No, whatever. Here's a larger set, I guess. So it says here to do six units, 12 spaces would be required for the units proper. Uh, and then two, one space for every three units.
As a guest.
So that would mean a minimum of 14 spaces.
Yeah.
And they provide 12 spaces, one garage and one driveway. Six spaces in the driveway. How do you accommodate six spaces in the driveway?
I assume they were two car wide driveways.
Um, and then five spaces for visitors. Next one, this one right here.
I'm not showing it, I'm not showing it here. You have to make a correction to the plan. Your plan is showing that this one's not.
Oh, that must be an older version.
It is.
Okay. Well.
There's a date on that one.
This is dated, uh, 8/1/24.
This is dated 8/1/24.
This is 8/1/24. Anyway, I, I don't question that six spaces in the driveway, how that's being delivered. I don't, I don't see how that's being delivered. There's parking here. You've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that's the visitor parking.
Okay, yeah.
Then you got two and each unit.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's 12 and 5.
17.
17. Only 14 was required.
I think we put the extras in so we'd have, so we'd be, make sure we had plenty.
Hmm. Well, anyway, I don't know how that's arrived, so that probably should be taken out.
Why, can't they have the extra places? In case you had extra, if you need for an extra.
Well, you need to show where they are, I mean.
They're, they're there, aren't they?
No.
What do you got? 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, and 5 right there.
17.
17.
Right, so the required spaces was 14, so they've achieved that already.
With the 7.
If we said we provided 17, they should have put in there 17 provided.
Well, they said 23.
Right.
Oh, they got 23?
Yeah.
Oh, no wonder.
That's what he's asking.
I'm like, where do they, where are you putting them?
They always aren't there.
Okay.
Well, there's something, but there's something else wrong here, because we've got 12, 6, and 5, which is 23, so something here is wrong. Because these.
There's six spaces in the driveway, it doesn't show, so that should be crossed out.
The six spaces, that one should come out then?
Right.
Okay.
But they should be able to have their 17.
They should be 12 for the units.
Okay, so that's six, six spaces where it says driveway, where the station come out.
Right.
Then that leaves 17, I guess, and 12.
Yes, 12, the two required.
They, they meet the requirements without that.
Right.
Right.
But it just needs to be fixed on the number of spaces.
Okay.
The 17 is fine, it just says shown, it's written wrong on the plan.
Well, it should have said, it, it should have said 14 required, 17 provided. And that's all, that's all it needed to show, and then they, they didn't have it in there.
Okay. 17 total.
So my other comment is that, um, you know, the, the zoning regulations are pretty forthright regarding the amount of acres, the minimum required in our bylaw.
Hmm.
Um, so on what premise do you think that this board should consider increasing that?
Well, you've got a situation where the landmass area in the center of town, you don't have any pieces like that anymore. They're all quarter acre lots, half acre lots. You're getting down in the geographic, if you draw a geographic circle around the center and you just keep working out and out, you gotta go a long ways for, before you can find a piece of property that will fit those needs and still be within the requirements of, um, the original, the, the way the original article was written, have walking distance to the town services, walking distance to the public safety, walking distance to the town common, and, and you know, that piece of land does fit the perimeter. Granted, it does, it's gonna require a, probably a variance before it's done. We, I'm not quite sure yet, until it goes before the zoning board, how they'll see it, but, but, uh.
There's an acre there, right?
An acre and a half.
Acre and a half.
Well, um, the point being.
You know, as far as the offset, the offset, you know, that's, uh, the offset to the property line is 30, 30 required in that, if it was residential, it would be 15. Right, on the sideline? On the sideline, set back.
Well.
Yeah.
The point being is the zoning was established for this part of town. Um, and that's why you're seeking a special permit. Um, however, the bylaw, which was approved by Town Board, says a minimum required, so I don't see where the benefit to the community is. Um, and so we're asking you about that. Um, and then the site itself could accommodate four units without any waivers.
Leave that to be the case.
Well, yeah, I just took that one out, like I thought.
But doesn't he still need the two waivers? I don't know, because doesn't age restricted.
I think it was eight, wasn't it? Six per, was it?
55 and over.
Four units per acre, I think is all it was.
40.
So, can I throw out a bit of context here?
Four units per acre.
Yeah. This, this is, this is the, this is the reason why I was contacted initially by the land use coordinator, so uh, you read off the list of the three waivers that have been requested by the applicant for this proposal. There is no such thing as a waiver under a zoning ordinance or bylaw. Waivers are issued under subdivision control and we, your board's aware of that because you frequently review it through subdivision. Waivers are issued under subdivision control and we are forward aware of that because you frequently review and group subdivisions. And waivers are a component of the subdivision control and they reference the statute they referenced in your core subdivision rules regulation. Uh, there's actually a standard in the statute under subdivision control for granting a waiver if it's in the public interest and if it's consistent with the purpose and intent of subdivision control. There's no equivalent provision in the zoning act. So when you're acting not as a special permit, not as a, as a subdivision approval authority, but rather as a special permit granting authority, you're acting under your zoning bylaw, you have no authority to grant a waiver unless the bylaw specifically incorporates the concept of a waiver. Some bylaw provisions do. Uh, you see this very often in newer bylaws for things like solar systems, uh, for things like marijuana cultivation or retailers. There are often provisions that allow for waivers to give some flexibility with those, those sorts of unique uses. But there's no general provision in the state zoning act for waivers. In fact, a waiver in the context of zoning law is actually known as a variance.
I'm sorry, I'm really hard to hear.
Variance.
A, a waiver under the zoning act is a variance. Variance is originally by the zoning board of appeals. So here you have the age restricted development bylaw. Um, I know you're familiar with it. I'm familiar with it because I reviewed it at the time that you adopted it. I think you were involved at the time, Lori, back seven years, six, seven years ago.
Yeah.
Um.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, that was adopted. There was actually an effort, and I know that you were involved in this, Lori.
Yep.
Maybe two, three, four years later, there was an effort to amend the bylaw to reduce the acreage requirement from two acres down to one and to, and to incorporate a waiver, a generic waiver provision in there. We actually went so far as to schedule in this room a public hearing on that topic and ultimately it didn't go any further than that.
It was postponed.
It was drawn. It was postponed.
Yeah, postponed, but it didn't make it to the meeting.
It never, it never, it never got made it to town meeting. It was withdrawn, never made it to the warrant. So I say all this because when I look at the warrants, the, the, the waivers that have been requested here, waiver one is a waiver from the two acre requirements in the bylaw. You have no authority to waive that two acre requirement. Waiver number two is a waiver from the density standard. You have no authority to waive that density standard. That authority doesn't exist in the bylaw today. And the third one, the setbacks, the twenty foot setbacks, you do have the authority to waive that because the way that the, the language of the bylaw reads, it says that it shall be, the setback shall be twenty feet, uh, excuse me, thirty feet. Quote, unless the planning board determines that a reduced setback is necessary to achieve the purposes of this section, it will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. So you have the authority because the language gives you that authority to, to vary that thirty foot setback and reduce it to zero if you want it to, or something less than thirty, because the bylaw gives you that authority. So when Jess Consolvo reached out to me several weeks ago and his application was received and said, what do we do about these? I issued an email with an opinion that said, you, you, there's no authority to grant those first two waivers. So if the applicant wants to seek a, a waiver, for lack of a better term, a, a variance really from those requirements, the applicant has to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Which is where we pretended to go first.
Right.
That's right. When you opened the hearing, I asked for a continuance.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. We're just getting some backup.
Fun. So, so bottom line is, this board, even if this board were to issue site plan approval.
Which they can.
You would still be subject to the zoning board of appeals issuing, um, variances for both the density and for the minimum lot size requirement. Even if you issue those variances, you're still not obligated to grant site plan approval. It's up to you because you withhold, you, you have special permit granting authority under the age restricted development bylaw to determine whether the whole project is in the, in the best interest of the community and is consistent with the purpose and intent uh, uh, meant to be achieved by the bylaw. So that's discretionary, that's up to you. But in terms of those minimum acre requirements and density standards, that's up to the zoning board of appeals at this stage.
And, and I think we're good with that. And so you know, I'm, well, I've been on here for eight years. So, yes, the whole point of our work during that time for bylaw changes was to make it easier to build age restricted homes and, and to have them hopefully bought, be on smaller lots. And I've always said, my standard statement, if the Board of Health allows it, it doesn't matter how big the lot is. This is my opinion. If we have town water, which that has town water, okay, it fills a lot of the needs, if you will. There aren't many places, as he stated to Robert, that you can build and still have something that can walk over to the plaza, that can walk to the post office, that can, oh, can't use the word walk. But they could roll themselves there, you know, um, it would be okay for somebody who was older and still wanted to participate in all the things that were going on. Yeah, and aging in place, units. So of course, um, that, and that comes from my housing authority background too, to do affordable housing. They will count towards the affordable housing units. So there's a lot of, will they come toward the affordable housing units? I think they will because they're gonna be rented, right?
No.
Oh, I thought you weren't gonna, are you gonna sell them?
We've decided we're gonna sell them, yeah.
Okay.
But we have no bearing. I'm glad that they go against the affordable housing stock. Uh, I would imagine they would because of the price point for them.
Right, okay. All right.
A hundred thousand less than ours.
It's different.
So.
Yes, I don't know.
My least standpoint hat that I don't wear anymore, but, uh, I would think that that would go against the housing stock. Sure, it's, I, I'm pretty much saying it, you're saying it.
No, I don't think you will. Uh, it, it's not, it's not based on price point. It's based on, um, household size and area of median income. So unless there's, and, and, and there has to be an affordability restriction on them if they're gonna count on the S H I. So there's, if, if the, there are affordable units that qualify as affordable because they're D restricted within the development, then those units themselves would count as the inventory. The product's whole would count because.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Which is why I term five village counted.
Right. Yeah.
So is the, I think, um, the whole point is laws are made to be changed and what makes common sense? What makes common sense for our community? What is it that we're trying to achieve? Or finally achieve, which we see takes years to do? So, do, do you have another question?
Well, um, just observing what's being proposed. Um, A, it seems like this five units would be achievable rather than six. Four units could be achievable on the same site rather than six. Um, then potentially six units or more, uh, depending on the building configuration. Nobody's saying it all has to be on one level. Um, so I see there's other options that could have been done to deliver this, um, age housing project. This one here is someone's concept of what they might configure it to be. Um, so the point here is not opposition against age restricted housing, um, or any kind of housing. The point here is, uh, this particular profile, um, is not what the original intent of our bylaw was, particularly where there are maybe other options that could have been explored. And, um, that's my perspective of this. Um, so, I mean, I'm not the only one making the decision here, but I think in terms of the applicant, um, the applicant might want to consider other alternatives. Um, so, um, and if that could be achieved without the variances and the waivers required, then, then everybody will be happy. I'm sorry?
Yeah, the variances, he has to, he has to get the variance. Yeah. So zoning goes first. But the comments were good, Robert, and I, I appreciate your thoughts and they'll be in the record at the end.
I mean, I'm, I'm like, maybe there's a townhouse scenario that would work better or, you know what I mean?
Who wants stairs when they're older? He's trying to be aging in place.
I'm trying to be an aging in place thing all on one level. ADA, ADA in front, ADA all the back. Uh, trying, trying to.
I understand. It's a feasibility question and that needs, you know, you as a developer have to, uh, review all those options. Um, um, so I, I don't know what to suggest other than what I did already.
Okay.
Um.
Let me go on to the, um, the first. Okay, from the assessor's office, we support this project. It will increase, increase tax revenue without our, without taxing the schools. Okay. Uh, from the Board of Health. In regards to the special permit for One Depot Street Extension, map fifty-one, parcel fifty-six, the Board of Health offers the following comments. A septic system must be designed, approved and installed that is compliance with three-ten C M R fifteen in the Townsend Board of Health regulations. Two, the property is proposed to be served by town water. Did you have any questions for the first? That's my, that's my answer. The Board of Health says yes, it's okay. Uh, building commissioner. Stormwater management application materials. Um, to, dear gentleman, you recently applied for approval of age restricted development at One Depot Street Extension, parcel fifty-one, fifty-six. Herein referred to as a property. After review of the data available to me and the town zoning bylaws herein referred to as C B A T Z Bs, I have come to the following determinations. Finding that your application notes of the property, this will be located on, is one point four acres in area. Argument section one fifty-four, fifty-one, fifty-four dash one dash B, and one point A of the age restricted development section in the T C B states two or more acres of land as criteria for the track of land required for this type of development. Conclusion, this property does not meet the minimum requirement for area as set forth in the zoning bylaw for age restricted development. This letter does, this letter does it guarantee, I'm reading the words that are here, approval, I'm not sure what he meant, but approval from the planning board. This letter only pertains to zoning as referenced. Other approvals from other boards, committees, departments may be required. Whoever is aggrieved by a zoning interpretation, order, requirement, direction or failure to act by building commissioner may file a notice of appeal to the, to be heard at the zoning board of appeals within thirty days of receipt of this letter. And this letter was dated October first.
I just wanna make sure we read everything. Did you read that?
Well, he, he, he states it on the other side. This land does not meet the two acre requirement for, yeah, it's on the other side.
I'm reading it into the record, so.
No, I did. Now twice. Okay, um, conservation commission. Is there a comment from conservation?
No.
Oh, okay, no comment. Highway department. Applicant will need to obtain a driveway permit through highway department. Planning score near. In my professional opinion and understanding of the A R D zoning bylaw, two of the three waivers requested lot acreage minimum and unit density are not allowable. Unfortunately, I do not believe this application can be approved under the current bylaws. Water selectmen. Water selectmen agree to leave it to the planning board to be decided. Water department. Each unit must have its own one inch service plastic in a two inch sleeve. Okay. I think that's it. Is that, is that right? That's my pile of.
That's everything for the bar.
Okay. So, hi. Were there any other, um, correspondence received from our butters or concerned citizens? Um, for discussion of technical peer review for minor stormwater management permit application for planning board regulation one seventy-five dash twenty-six, employment of outside consultants. Um, we can wait.
Eventually.
Until after zoning, I think, before we.
Sure.
Do that. Uh, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, there's no public here, so there's no, unless, Kevin, do you have any questions?
No.
Um, we have to be out here to speak and support our opposition. Did you have any other comments?
I don't.
Okay. And thank you for the ones that you did make.
Only, only a reminder that between now and whatever continuance that you choose, the members who are absent tonight should review the transcripts and sign their filings forms if they're eligible to vote.
And I did state that when we started.
Okay.
So it's part of the minutes already. I opened with that, actually. Um, so I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing until, do we have anything booked on the eighteenth yet? Uh, of November?
That I think.
Then, um, I would do the same at six forty-five.
What, what date?
November eighteenth.
Are we sharing?
What time is your appointment already? Um, um.
Um, it's not really gonna matter because it's a, it's a second night of a special town meeting. You know how those go. Um, but it's only, it's, it's an as-dated second night. So if I wrap up on the first night, I'll be available. If it goes to the second night, I'll be booked the whole night.
Okay, that's a good.
But I'll put it in my book and presuming that I'm available, I'll plan to be here.
Okay. If anything comes up after zoning that we have questions on, uh, Beth and I will get ahold of you, okay? Um, okay, so the motion is to continue until November eighteenth at six forty-five P M.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the, um, One Depot Street Extension hearing to eighteen November at six forty-five P M.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, vote please.
Carol Hawes says yes.
Robert Derrin, yes.
And Laura Schiffer, yes. Thank you very much for the, for attending.
You too. Good night.
Wasn't that bad? Okay. That's good. We got a lot out of the way, um, for that. So, next up, three point one, discuss project proposal, migration of multi-segmented Townsend official zoning maps qualified in code of the town of Townsend to a one single official inclusive Townsend zoning map. Is that under our approval?
Well, it is in that we're looking for approval by Andy's office with like your approval of that project. Right now, if you look in the code books. Right now, if you look in the code books, all of the districts are separate sheets of paper and they're like eighty-nine.
Yeah, I read, I, I did read that whole thing and I was like, yes, do, do whatever is allowed to do, yes.
So MRPC.
Okay, that was like, that was coming out of my mouth, MRPC.
Yes, would, would hopefully help us migrate everything into one collective map. And that would be, and the planning board's role would then be to hold the public hearing because it would be an amendment to the zoning bylaw to admit the map and repeal the old map.
Okay.
So that would be the role and then, you know, bring it to town meeting and.
Yeah, I, I did, I did read that floor, but I said yes. Whatever, whatever consolidates.
Would you like a motion to, of approval?
If you're all in favor, I'll record it as such. Do you have any questions about the project or?
No. No, pretty clear.
Thank you, that's a good one. Do we choose Planning Board Regulations Review one-seventy-five dash fourteen for the submitted? Submissions, one-seventy-five dash fifteen requires submissions for the submitted submissions. Want to explain your intent there? Do you want to explain your intent?
Oh, this is, this is where the board has gone in terms of going through all the regulations.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if you had changes or.
Yeah, so this was right from the code and.
Where can we start putting or amending, since we see the problems that we're coming up with, language that allows for some common sense without having to change a bylaw?
You can't because legal stuff.
How, how can you can't? There still has to be parameters.
Well, yeah, you could, for anything, right.
Town water, Board of Health.
Okay.
You know, those parameters must be met for every conservation. You know, wetlands, all those have to be met, no matter what.
Okay.
Okay? I, my question keeps coming up with lot size and setbacks. Okay, we don't have that much land that's going to be built on.
Okay.
Once town water does someday, because the plan is that, you know, I have to tell you, well, two things I have to tell you. I had a Realtor annual meeting today that was a luncheon. I sat with people from a couple of different towns. I always like to sit with people that I don't always see, kind of thing.
Yeah.
Talk about what's going on in the towns. Two compliments. Excuse me, we're getting to Townsend. One, the staff is extremely friendly. They found, these are other Realtors who have come into town versus other towns and have said, they're so welcoming, they're so helpful, okay? And I always, they're nice to people out of town versus in town. But these were all from out of town.
Okay, so that's us.
Yeah, and then the other was, wow, your water department rocks.
Yes, they do, I, I agree with that. They do a good job.
So we were very fortunate in that our commissioner went after grant funding to take care of this PFAS. It's, it's, it's known nationwide now what's going on here, not just statewide.
Nationwide, but he did a tremendous job getting those grants.
Right, and that is his plan for thirteen, connecting from Townsend to Lunenburg. Okay, there, there might be that parcel that might benefit from that someday. Okay? So, do you understand what I'm saying? I think you should use common sense, still adhere to all the lot safety laws, water laws, septic laws. But if it doesn't make sense because you don't have the right topography, you might have the acreage, but not the right topography. When you have a level, a level piece of land that's sandy soil, it's like prime. And when you have that next to town water, that's gold. So why would we inhibit? Because today it's very expensive anyway to build anything. The materials are expensive, the labor is worse.
Covid's tougher.
Everything, everything. The interest rates aren't what they were, will they ever be, you know, to be able to afford the pricing of today? Everything is like a pebble in the brook and it spreads. How are we gonna make some sense of it? Do the, do the most economical thing to do. For example, this afternoon, the road is closed at Turnpike Road going past Walden School.
I remember that.
For quite some time, fire, police, other, ton of people there, ton of cars there. What they do in their exercises? No, lithium battery.
Really?
Yes. How good is that blew up? How good is that for the environment?
Well, that's what I, when those energy people came and spoke about, you know, we have to have electric cars everywhere, what do you do with all these batteries? What do you do with the panels off? My daughter's house, she's had solar panels on her house though for, I don't know, sixteen, seventeen years. So she's got probably another five years of life left in her.
And what happens to all that material?
What happens to all that material? He couldn't even answer my questions.
Because they don't think that far, they're just, oh, that's a good thing for today.
And they want to make, what is it, she, what is it, Kevin had just said something about trucks. Every third truck that's being built has to be electric by twenty twenty-five.
What a cost factor that's going to be? Who's going to have to charge that thing?
It's already in, it's coming January one.
Wait, twenty twenty-five or something?
How much sense does that make? It's already in the building code.
So, the building code is supposed to be about public safety.
Yeah.
And it's returned its focus now on energy and at the risk of public safety. And that's been going on for ten years, okay? The insurance companies now, well, just imagine, I, I deal with this all the time. So, if you had an oceanfront home, okay? The code now is for protecting the building more as a priority over the occupants. So just imagine now that you're in a two-story home and you have a child up on the second floor. If you're within one mile of the ocean, you have to have laminated glass where you can't penetrate through, okay? So how is a fireman supposed to rescue a child there? Okay, so, you know, you have to look at the broad picture and not focus on one topic without looking at it all in general.
I agree.
Right.
I agree, and they don't do that.
No.
Because one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing and how it's going to affect the other department or the other thing or the other company or whatever.
Or, I mean, I've even heard where they tell you not to buy electric cars in your garage because of.
Yeah, they'll blow up.
Right.
Yeah, they'll burn the whole thing down.
No, it, it's, you know, this is, you look at it right now. So in the last fifteen to twenty years, and we talk about the hurricanes down in Florida, okay? They increased their building codes two-hundred percent. And the insur, at the pressure from the insurance company, now those very same insurance companies are denying insurance or not.
Oh, yeah, I've heard that, yeah.
So.
So what is five million or billion, whatever they just promoted, approved here at the state for building homes? What is that going to do?
It's going to help the developers.
Do what?
It's a subsidies that we're paying for through our tax dollars.
They're going to get? How many units do, and who, who's going to get those units?
That's a good question, who's going to build those units? That's another question.
All the people that they can't house in hotels right now.
I, I, I could tell you.
Something is very wrong, it's very anti-American. It's very anti-American citizens to tax us to death. And that's what's happening, they're ruining small business.
Everything else. Can I make one comment? Can I bring something to the attention of the board?
On what?
As, as a reference for this project and future projects.
Okay, but no, don't do this one specifically because we're out of public hearing.
I'm sorry?
We're out of the public hearings, we cannot discuss that until the public hearing. Give me a hypothetical.
Do something else, change the.
A lot, in general.
Yes.
A lot of these new developments, if you examine them, or in many instances, you'll find that they're designed for the benefit of the developer. Okay? And as an example, you have a preconceived dwelling unit that is rubber stamped. So in planning, the conceptual plan is based upon a predetermined unit profile, okay? What I'm saying that is a footprint, okay? So, in several instances, there are other alternatives. Those alternatives may require a more creative site plan or modifying the building rubber stamp to accommodate the site better. Are you following what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think we can have the same discussion for the one before.
Well, in other words, there's no creativity putting in to this. So like I suggested earlier, you know, there may be other alternatives, okay?
Well, that's something that's still going to be thought about for, let's get back to the bylaw though. How do we, how, how can we be more flexible in using our common sense for a particular property? Because every property is different, okay? And most of the properties that are larger, first of all, they don't fit, they don't fit the concept of what, what we want to get done as far as being accessed for the elderly to have accessible to services.
You've just hit it on the nail head. Every project is different. Every design and profile has to be unique to that project, okay?
Agreed.
All right?
Yeah.
So, when you have, in other words, when I look at these site plans as an architect, I look at other alternative creative ways to meet the client's objective. So if my client is a developer, okay? Then I would explore with him other altern, alternatives in providing the kind of structure there that would meet his prober.
And, and at the same time, you're, you're thinking about your client and the cost that he has to or she has to have or entail in order to produce the product. If you get so creative just to follow the bylaws, okay? Even though it could be more than what the bylaw allows, if you're just following what the bylaw allows and trying to be creative to fit within their bylaw that you think might be okay, it may not be affordable to, to obtain, especially today.
Well, this.
Did I make my point with that one?
I, I get your point, but there are other considerations, all right?
Tell me your other considerations.
Right, technology, one. Construction management, two, okay? Any more? For example, I was involved with an affordable housing program and it was designed for irregular lots. So there was a basic building profile for a core building that would be generic to all of them with different configurations. So that generic profile did not have a given front, back, rear, or side, okay? It was a core structure that would accommodate things. All of that can be computerized. I did this in the seventies.
Okay, but computerized for what? You're not, the computer's not going to.
Well, I'll give you an example. In the seventies, I had a developer that did six hundred units a year, okay? So, we, through computers, we had files for different floor plan. We had four different floor plans every year that we introduced. That had eight versions. So we could go down the street and there'd be thirty-two different houses that are almost the same but have different character.
Okay, well, Timberly Park in the seventies. Twelve, four hundred homes.
Okay, so, not only that, but when we did a project, okay? We avoided all the middlemen. There was no lumberyards. We bought directly from the window companies, from the, from the lumberyards, okay? So that's technology, all right? That's how you get costs down, all right? And in a community like this, there's so many ways that our community can do more with typically lots that would be non-buildable, okay? Particularly with the developer where we, as a community, link up with six or seven different towns. Each one offering four or five or six unbuildable lots. So a developer is not trying to make a huge project on six units. He's making a similar or even greater project, a profit, on doing thirty at a time. So if towns collectively got together and offered so many lots, then a developer could take a prototype home and use it thirty times in one big project.
Okay, so here's the other thing we're dealing with. We're dealing with a small town called Townsend. We're also dealing with a lot of local people who, who own and want to do things here. Why are we not helping that? Why are we interested in developers coming in from other areas and going from town to town to build a prototype?
Wait, no, if they're talking about affordable, you examine it. What, where are the costs going and how can you improve on that?
I just wanted to know if you were going to finish each agenda because.
All right, I.
Okay.
I've got my point here.
But I, but I want us to think about this. I want us to think about addressing the bylaw change to have a little flexibility in it so that the approving body, who sits to listen to people who come in, can have some kind of flexibility if it makes sense, if it makes sense. And so this was a bylaw issue because you kept them in a bylaw and so didn't add them about having some flexibility within our bylaw. I'm not going to be here forever, you're not going to be here forever. And things change. It, today is not the seventies in any way, shape, or form. You're never going to have a six hundred, six hundred being done again unless you're in Texas or some desert area.
That's not true. That's not true. I, I'm just, if you look at how affordable is being addressed today, it's with subsidies.
Yeah, I know.
Relief from the towns, relief with, with tax funds.
Do we have to do the correspondence?
Oh, do we need to read these? Is that what you're saying?
Did you want to take action on the review of the regulations that I printed out for you or do you want to do that next meeting? It's on the agenda, it's.
Oh, do you want me to read the correspondence?
I'm going to continue three-point-two to the next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Um, I'm hoping that we got, both of us got some points across on that.
All right. All right. And that's, you know, you don't wanna go through correspondence.
Yeah, four point one. Do you wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, decision of the zoning board of appeals for the variance application of Brian Dodger, twenty-two miles lane Shirley. Property addressed twenty-two miles lane. Public key was held on Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty-four, so the decision was reached. Came, uh, director. Trying to say with the findings for.
Yeah. You don't have to read the whole thing just to.
As a result of our comments and written submissions, the zoning board of appeals made the following findings, a special permit application in this associated tier. Submitted by the applicant and discussed at the public hearing satisfy the requirements of the town of Shirley's protective zoning bylaws in the arc dash two district. Made a motion, vice chair, CEO, made a motion to approve the special permit under section two point ten point eight of the protective zoning bylaws. Accessory buildings with the following condition, the accessory building will only be used for housing livestock. This is, they notice a decision, two oh three Greenfield Road. The decision of the board is to grant the variance and set back the conditions. On conditions, toll rate to be dealt closer than sixty feet from center of road, with complete decision filed with the time clock available during normal business hours. That's in Ashby. The town of Lunenburg will hold a public hearing on ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, at six oh five P M, seventeen Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. For a stormwater management permit, seventy Kilgore Street. Town of Lunenburg will hold the public hearing on ten, well, I guess it's already, no, ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, at six oh five P M. At seventeen Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. For a site plan approval, stormwater management permit at four ninety-four electric. Lunenburg, public hearing, ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, at six oh five P M, seventeen Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. Stormwater management permit for seven ninety-one, Munster Road. And the last public hearing for Lunenburg on ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, for stormwater management permit, seven ninety-five, Munster Road.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any documents for four point two? Or are they just in the portal?
Other in the portal. I didn't print them.
Okay, so four point two is received, Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission and other agency notices, and they're in our portal. So we're not reading them into the record. Five education trainings, just standards for you to look, to see. Five point one, so it's something collaborative in the fall, went to workshops, and there's webinars. And then five point two, planning board number resource library. And thank you, Beth, for everything that's in there. I just wanna hop back up to three point two, ask you, Beth has printed off for us, three point two. One seventy-five fourteen and one seventy-five fifteen. And I'm gonna ask that you mark them up. You mark them up. Look at them and see if there's anything in these two sections that you would change to make it easier for us and everybody else. Okay, so these two, they're in your packet. Okay, she gave them to you.
You should have.
And this will be on the agenda again next month.
Okay.
And we'll discuss it then.
All right.
Make sure you have it.
Can I have it?
You have two with them?
Yep, it should be two, yep.
One seventy-five fourteen and one seventy-five fifteen.
Okay.
I brought your laptop from your.
Yeah. That's where we'll, where we'll continue the discussion. And so now I'll entertain a motion and I wanna again, thank you for your comments.
You wanna what?
Thank you for your comments. Because I appreciate the back and forth discussion. I think it's healthy for everybody. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at seven forty-nine P M. I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-nine P M.
I second.
Okay, and I agree. So we are adjourned.